Next item on our agenda is our public hearings. And Mr. Rhodes, if you would like to work us through those?
Through the chair. As you recall, on August 22nd, this council held a public hearing on the amendments to the future land use map with regard to changing from moderate density single-family to medical education institution. Part and parcel to that request, tonight we're holding a public hearing on ZR 1310, which is a rezoning request of UHS on behalf of the Lawrence Technological University to rezonate our four single-family residential to ERO Education Research Office. If that rezoning is approved by this council, we are also considering a site plan SP 1283 for a proposed 151 room dorm and 51,614 gross square foot two-story building. For the sake of discussion, I'd like to respectfully request that we do a presentation on all three items. Brief video presentation, then there'll be an introduction from representatives of Lawrence Tech, and we have a PowerPoint presentation for the professionals to go through the projects, and then we can hold a public hearing and respond to questions.
Okay. Mr. Langton? Before you start, Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Langton is coming.
From the owner of Lawrence Technological University, to amend the future land use map to Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, and in accordance with Article 4, Section 5.9, the Comprehensive Master Plan procedure, check to 45 zoning ordinance, for moderate density single-family to medical education institution, to plan for future expansion of Lawrence Technological University. The property is located at 21222 West Ten Mile Road, east of Circle Drive and north of Ten Mile Road between Northwestern Highway and Circle Drive in Section 22 of the city. The subject parcels as well as the parcels to the west are shown in our moderate density single-family residential on the future land use map. The properties to the north, east, and south are shown as medical educational institutions. The site contains 15.5 acres of land with 585 feet of frontage on Ten Mile Road and a depth of 1,705 feet. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the master plan amendment request were: The amendment has been thoroughly studied by the Planning Commission at their planning professional study meetings. The amendment will serve to guide and coordinate decisions on new development and redevelopment, or assist in a review of development proposals to confirm the needs, the goals and strategies of the plan, and provide a basis for amendment to the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. The amendment will provide for any future expansion of Lawrence Technological University. To rezoning requests of UHS, on behalf of the owner of Lawrence Technological University, to rezonate properties from our four single-family residential to ERO Education Research Office. The property is located at 21222 West Ten Mile Road, east of Circle Drive and north of Ten Mile Road between Northwestern Highway and Circle Drive in Section 22 of the city. The subject properties as well as the properties to the west are zoned our four single-family residential. The properties to the north, east, and south are zoned ERO Education Research Office. With regard to existing land uses, the subject properties as well as the properties to the west are vacant or developed single-family homes stretching on Circle Drive. The properties to the north, east, and south are developed with various buildings associated with the Lawrence Technological University campus. The total acreage of the property proposed for rezoning to ERO Education Research Office is 9.92 acres of land. The rezoning will allow for the future redevelopment of the property by LTU. The property contains 67.5 feet of frontage along Ten Mile Road and 955.3 feet of frontage along Circle Drive. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the rezoning were: The proposed rezoning to ERO Education Research Office will allow the petitioner to redevelop the property with new land uses compatible with the existing development. The proposed rezoning will not have adverse effects upon any of the adjoining zoning or land uses. Owner of Lawrence Technological University, today construction of a new student dorm for it. The property is located at 21222 West Ten Mile Road, east of Circle Drive and north of Ten Mile Road between Northwestern Highway and Circle Drive in Section 22 of the city. Subject properties as well as the properties to the west are zoned our four single-family residential. The properties to the north, east, and south are zoned ERO Education Research Office. With regard to existing land uses, the subject properties as well as the properties to the west are vacant or developed single-family homes stretching Circle Drive. The properties to the north, east, and south are developed with various buildings associated with the Lawrence Technological University campus. The site contains a total of 5.73 acres of land, 615.42 feet of frontage on Circle Drive, and depth ranging from 250 to 449 feet. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were: Landscape and setback requirements of the ERO Education Research Office zoning district. The petitioner is to combine lots 23 through 25 of supervisor's plat of M.J. Murphy Works of State with the parent LTU parcel through application with the Assembly Department. The petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Forest Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
At this time, I'd like to invite the representatives of Lawrence Tech to make a brief introduction, and then we will pull up the PowerPoint presentation for the audience and human audience on the table.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Louis Walker, and I'm president of Lawrence Technological University, and I will speak first. And I just want to say that we have a long heritage of progress in working with the city of Southfield since we came to the Southfield in the mid-1950s. We've been partners in economic development and cooperation since that time, 1955. And our students have been active in this community from day one, building relationships with Southfield children, helping citizens, retailers, businesses, and professional organizations. In 1958, our College of Architecture and Design helped the city officials design the city of Southfield corporate seal, which you see right here in front of us. In the 1950s, Lawrence Tech helped the city develop zoning areas to improve economic development and house tech quarters such as Bendix and Eaton. And I like to thank that we were a part from the very beginning of that transition from rural agricultural roots to a thriving suburban dynamic enterprise that Southfield has cemented. In the 1980s, our college management did a study and found that Lawrence Tech students, faculty, and staff spent more than $11 million on goods and services in Southfield. In today's dollars, with over 600 full-time and part-time faculties, staff and administrators, and 45 other students, that translates to well over $33 million annually, or $635,000 per week, and we think that is a conservative estimate. Since 2003, we've brought in nearly $21 million in research funds, mostly from the federal government, that have been spent here in Southfield. We have 1,250 alums living and/or working in Southfield, 650 of those live and parcel their work in Southfield. And now we have students from 43 different countries on our campus and 30 states at this time. Nearly 650 international students are there. We need to expand and grow, and we have plans to attract more students from out state, from out state, from out of state, and internationally. And this attracts more young professionals into the city of Southfield who will live there and spend money here. It is good for business, it's good for Southfield. And we need to expand our housing now to make that happen, and that's why these requests are being made. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else from?
Hi, I'm Kevin Finn, senior student at Lawrence Technological University, and I wanted to report back on items we discussed at the last meeting that I attended over a few weeks ago. It was for the mayor's and the council's request that we bring our students who live on Circle Drive to have a barbecue with residents on Circle Drive, or not Lawrence Tech students. And we did a huff set last Thursday. I have the last week, took both Saturday and Wednesday to go to each house, drop off communications, talk to residents who want to speak with me at that point. They also got a chance last Thursday, those were attendants, a lot of residents were able to make it and to meet our residents, your architect Joe Reiser, myself, as well as our students. And it was a very good evening. I know there were some residents there that maybe see the issues a little differently than how we do, how we do, with good dialogue. And I think the one thing that I was very proud of was the way our students represented themselves. We had every student that lived on Circle Drive, we attended with the exception of one who went to exam that night. It was a pretty good excuse. And we will continue that. My only question was, dialogue, that we need to continue coming and finding out what's happening. And we will continue to make sure that our neighbors who live on Circle Drive, continue to try and participate, but also become more of a part of the different things that are happening, the exciting things that are happening on our campus. I also want you to know that student behaviors were brought up. I want you to know that I have met with those students who live on Circle Drive now on three different occasions, so feedback is provided by the council and residents, and I will continue to do that as well. And we're trying to build these students into good results. Our community conduct is important. And I make sure all the residents that I've met, they receive my visitor card, and I promise you that I will get back to them immediately if there are concerns, any student behavior that maybe gets on the line before we want. I understand that I've known you for this, and you have been also at the University, LYO University. I will pay attention to you and your experience at Lawrence Tech. I thank you.
I'm Joe Veriser, I'm the university architect for Lawrence Tech, and reside there as well. I work at 21,000 West Ten Mile here in Southfield. I just want to take a moment to share with you the fact that we have had, for preparation for what you see tonight, has been in place since the middle of the 60s when we started employing property over in Circle Drive. And we own, to give the numbers as I stand here, all of the 11 properties, it's 18 that we own, the 11 that we don't. And so, we've worked in 25-year increments in doing our master planning, and that's an ambitious 25, because it's a 25 that doesn't always match our proximity since we could do it. So, it's an ongoing change, a process, it's a difference in the funding process, so it's a 25-year plan that just keeps moving forward, forward, and forward over time. And anyone who has seen the properties that we own would recognize that in the quarter and 18 over all of the years, that our efforts to re-assemble a home, all the properties that we today call some of that. So, with that, we want to know, which we know also, that we've done everything we could to try to be impactful to the needs of the community, to try to be good neighbors, always in the past and are continuing even with the project that you're seeing tonight. With that, to turn it back to Rhodes, and then the consultant that we have, JPRA, come forward.
Thank you. Through the chair, we bring the screen down and the PowerPoint presentation. Just going to again do a brief introduction of what's being considered tonight, and then One of the items that came up at our last public hearing was a question of what properties that Lawrence Tech currently owns, and all the properties that are shown in blue have been identified as being owned by Lawrence Tech University. The area that we're considering tonight for a master plan amendment for moderate density single-family residential to medical education institution is highlighted by the solid red line here. The dashed red line just indicates very loosely Lawrence Tech's 25-year plan in the future for possible expansion, but for tonight's purposes, we're only considering what we could call a Phase 1 amendment to the master plan. Also tonight, public hearing specifically being held is for rezoning requests from our four single-family to ERO Education Research Office. Again, the property that's being considered for the rezoning is indicated in red. I'm sorry, this is the master plan amendment, and this is the rezoning request, which is slightly smaller than the master plan, because these three properties are currently zoned ERO. But the property that's being considered for rezoning is shown here. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Newman, who will take us through the rest of the presentation. And at the conclusion of the presentation, we turn it back over to the chair for opening the public hearing.
My name is Sue Newman with JPRA Architects, and I will walk you through a brief description of the siting of the building, and then turn it over to my colleagues to discuss the site amendments and designing the building. To orient you on the campus, the site is cool. The campus is founded at the south by Ten Mile Road, on the east by the Northwestern Service Drive, and on the north by Civic Center Drive. There are two existing housing buildings on the campus, one called Student Housing South, which is at the south side of Ten Mile, and the second one is Student Housing North, which is adjacent to what I'll refer to as Central Campus. Central Campus consists of the majority of the academic buildings that the students use for classes. In situating this building, we thought it was important to build some connectivity to Central Campus, which is right here where all the classrooms are, to the north housing building, so that we can promote shared open space for recreational uses between the two housing buildings. And thirdly, to promote connectivity with the community with an extension of a pedestrian walkway up to a bike path that will be built with this project that will connect to the gateway project, the community gateway project. In the future, there will be an extension of that bike path that will take you down along the service drive all the way to Ten Mile Road. Additionally, it was important to site the building so that it had connectivity to the parking area, so that students, there are any students that will be driving, primarily freshmen, doors, and most students will not have a car, but if they live within a certain radius of the campus, they will be allowed to drive a car to the university. So, we conveniently located the building adjacent to Sea Lot, which is the area that I was circling with the red dot. And we purposely faced the building towards Central Campus to promote ease of access for the students from the proposed student building to the north building, and again to the classrooms on the Central Campus. To give you a little more detail on the siting of the building, we've also provided a drop off zone for move-ins and move-outs, and any guests that are being dropped off that will conveniently come to the front door of the building. We've also provided pedestrian walkways that promote the connectivity to and from the proposed housing building and the north housing building, and again to Central Campus. Once again, to the north, to the community bike path. We were required to have a setback on the Circle Drive property line of 63 feet. We've exceeded that, excuse me, 68 feet. We've exceeded that setback and set the building back 85 feet. In addition, we have a setback of 93 feet onto the north-south property line, and we more than doubled that by setting the building back to approximately 210 feet. And lastly, we had a required setback along the north property line of 75 feet. We've exceeded that setback and set the building at 83 feet. And now I'll turn it over to Mark Russell, who walked through the site analysis.
Again, my name's Mark Russell with Russell Designs and Land State Marketing Enterprises. Just to step back a little bit, Sue mentioned the siting of the building and a couple of issues, or a couple of concerns that not only the university can, with onsite circulation and connectivity to the proposed bike path, and then the future gateway at Civic Center Drive and Northwestern. But it's very important to point out as well, there are a great deal of mature trees onsite that we wanted to try to preserve, and along with that, again, these are shown as existing arid trees that we wanted to try to preserve. So, a couple of issues arose while we were developing the site plan for the project, and one was the project civil engineer. One of those was the making sure that we preserved as much vegetation as we possibly could to the north portion of the site for screening and buffering of adjacent uses. Sue has already touched a little bit on the setbacks that we've accomplished, and they quite honestly exceeded some of those requirements. Another thing, working closely with the civil engineer on the project, we've located the detention basin here with a required two-foot wet body to the southern portion of this particular parcel, adjacent to an existing wetland area here, so that we could mature some trees. And you can see that we took great pain in trying to articulate the contouring, as well as incorporating a retaining wall that would preserve existing tree that are located in this location here, in a large hedge row of walnuts and other hardwoods. Sue mentioned a little bit, touched a little bit on the open space, which is shown on this screen, coloring kind of meandering its way, a jail could be detention bond. The area to the north of the building, surrounding the building, we might point out that what we tried to do is blend landscape trees into the existing landscape as quickly as we could, so that it could mature beyond the construction of this site and be compatible with the adjacent landscape, and then hopefully encouraging some wildlife that might be disrupted during the construction of this project to come back and reside here on campus as they can presently. Now, the site drainage is accomplished by a bio-swell, which would be a vegetated swale through here that will filter water, spilling into rain gardens here, another rain garden located here, so that it would be a cleansing effect of the surface drainage, not only from the building, but also from the site, cleanse that water before it has been collected and piped to the detention basin, where it then eventually will discharge into the existing wetland, so that the discharge can be as clean as possible before it does enter into that existing ecosystem. The large area here, again, as Sue mentioned a little bit, we wanted to maintain as much open space as possible. The housing department has encouraged us to do that during the development of this site plan, so that we can cater to the students in developing outdoor activity areas for them, such as the barbecue that just happened within the community, perhaps there could be additional civic events held in this location. We've also listened to the planning mission and provided a vegetated buffer here that will be comprised of, Terry, did you get a slide in there? And, well, we'll go back here. This is a better looking picture. This is going to be a vegetated buffer, which will be accomplished by deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubbery material, so that we can not only provide a buffer for the students to pass through, to prevent the students from passing through, but also provide what's required by deciduous opacity requirement of 80 to 90 percent. This can be accomplished with deciduous and evergreen plant material, so that we'll use those. There'll be native plant material that will be blurring throughout the season, so it would not only provide a visual study interest, but also an interest for wildlife to reside, but also maintain that visual, official buffer. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mark, and he's going to walk through the building.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Mark Von Werder. I'm an architect with JPRA Architects. I'd like to give you just a brief overview of what's happening inside of the building. The building footprint, as you've seen on the previous slides, is rather unique for a very specific reason for that. These students who will be staying here in this building are freshmen. It's very important to the university that these freshmen become part of a community, a community of other students. And so, the way that we've approached this is we've developed in the floor plan five separate, well, what we refer to as pods. They have approximately 30 students in each, they're on two levels, the first level and the second level. Each of these pods has a common kitchenette area in it, a common living area with a fireplace, large screen television. The sleeping rooms are on two levels, and the size of each of those, there are common toilet rooms as well. And it's very, it's important to give each of the students views to the exterior, but also to have them really have a lot of opportunities to come out of their rooms, interact with each other in even smaller groups, but also to interact with each other as a group of 150 or 151 students that are in the building itself. And there are common areas that are developed for the students. Of course, we all love to do laundry, so there are four laundry rooms. But there's also a cafe, which would have a coffee available for the students also upstairs, some community rooms for larger projects, students may be working on together, the multi-purpose rooms, students over time will find a correct use for gate rooms and lounge areas as well. Now, if you take a look on the inside of these pods, you can start to see how the students could be interacting in the lounge areas with the television, fireplace, and kitchenette. And really, the opportunity that the interior requirements of this building gave us as designers was to really break down the scale of this building. Really, it is a two-story residential building, and by breaking it into the five pods, we're able to really take the mass of this building and make it much more palatable to the neighbors. You can see that the view on the top, excuse me, the view on the top is the main entrance to the building. Sue referred to it facing, again, facing Sea Lot, but more importantly, facing the other housing building, which is just to the left on that view, and then beyond that to the campus itself and the buildings where the students will be learning. And the view on the bottom is the view on the back of the building that faces into the existing wooded area. see here in a lot of these locations. There's a burnished stone, a burnished block masonry in a large format at the entry and a smaller format is an accent masonry at some of these stairways. We've also introduced, as sort of a nod to the wooded area here, some wood veneer panels at the corners of the building to help break out some of the mass of the building, really blend it in more. The roof, all of the, there are very little flatter area on this all. All of this roof is a pitched roof and again, reacting back to a lot of the more recent projects that have been built over the years, it's a standing seam metal roof there. So you can see some of the materials here, the brick and the burnished block, and then some of the wood panels, and you can see some of the selections that have been made for site lighting and site furniture.
Through the chair, at this time it may be appropriate to open the public hearing, and then after the public hearing's been closed, the consultants and representatives of LTU as well as myself will be here, and they'll answer any questions that comes in handy.
Okay. We have already had the public hearing for the amendment to the light use, so we held that on August twenty-second, two thousand eleven. So the public hearing is for CR thirteen ten. If there's anyone that wants to, first one, Mr. Gregory Keeler, he gave up his time during the comment time so that he could speak on this one, I'm calling him first. So, Mr. Keeler, if you would come to the microphone.
And it's two separate hearings, A and B.
Could you give your name and address for the record? You have five minutes.
Thank you. Greg Keeler, twenty-one, twenty-five, one-seven-zero, Circle Drive. One of the things, we haven't seen the master plan. When they put this dormitory in, there's going to be a new sewer system put in, and we're being forced to pay for this. The students and beer bottles in my front yard have had problems with that. I've had problems with the renters that they've had there where the police have come out at least ten or twelve times because dogs have gone after me, my wife, and some of my neighbors. It shouldn't be an incident. Only reason the dog got stopped was the police officer was online for work, and the dog went after the police officer. This has all been since then. I've been there seventeen years. This is the first year I've been up there or invited to LTU for anything. So if we're good neighbors, why have we been seventeen years? I know the rest of them, members rest of on my block, and we all have the same problems. There's no parking sign that was brought up. I would not like to see that on my street because we don't have a problem, we only have a problem when they have their parks and stuff going on in our street. Otherwise, we don't have this problem. The reason why, I do not want to see that happen because me and my wife both work at home, so that construction and everything else will cause a problem. In the meeting, one of the biggest things they were talking about is their students. But what about us residents? What about us that pay taxes? Why should we have to be going through all these other problems and everything else? I haven't heard anything about putting more lights on the street for us. I haven't heard anything about putting a little blue light out there so it's a phone so we can call emergency in case something happens on the street. Nothing for us at all. I've heard all these great things about the students but not one about the residents. Do we count, do they care? We came back to the second meeting, they did not address not one issue. When Mr. Flynn called and spoke to me, I told Mr. Flynn, my issue is, we brought up problems and you don't know not one of them. So why are you calling me if you don't know one issue? Just one. Now, pictures I've given you, the first one shows a shot from their parking lot, if they articulate from their parking lot straight down the side, as you can see the new dormitory, there's already a sidewalk in place, there's already lights in place. So they do not have to do all these other things you were talking about. They do not have to turn this dormitory in towards our homes. The second page is a shot from the sky looking down into that area of the parking lot, which you see there are a lot of trees, which in the last one I showed you those trees were, had been deplosted in that area. I'm thankful for the fact that they did show where the big trees were at on it. Now, the next slide shows where the dormitory, if they took it and rotated towards their parking lot, that it would not come into Circle Drive, one. Two, it would not touch the big trees since you pointed out where the big trees were at because this will be higher than it, and it would give more than the buffer that we would like from Circle Drive, so there would be no reason for them to come through, cut through, walk through, to get to the frat houses that sit on our street. Our street is not a party street for them. Next off, the next picture I show is the dormitory that sits now on Ten Mile, and where it sits at Ten Mile, and then the next page after that shows if they were to stick a dormitory on Ten Mile, we would definitely have no problem, maybe build a board storage, tent storage, whatever. It wouldn't bother us at all because it would no longer be in our backyard with students wandering or parading through our property. Next is the property that is on sale, on sale that is off Civic Center Road in Lash. That piece of property which is one acre, which is the size of all of our property, is selling for one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars by Mr. Jonathan Bates. So we have property, so the common offer of fifty thousand dollars, why don't you just come and ask us ten dollars? What kind of crap is that? Nobody said they were selling, you don't come and ask for something? No. The next picture shows then property off of Twelve Mile, three pieces of property, two acres, two acres, and one acre. All three can be bought for a price of three hundred thousand dollars. If they like, they can buy it and move it into a neighborhood comfortable to where we live at. We do not live in homes that are side by side, we all live on acre lots, we all live far apart from each other. My backyard is very wooded, I bought it because I wanted a nice wooded area for my family to have family reunions, for groups to come over. When I was a youth director, I wanted the youth to come there and be in my backyard and be in the woods and everything else. I did not buy it so I can sit on top of another house. Notice I want another house that's been vacant for three or four years that may have mold or something else growing in it. My house does not have any of these problems in it or anything else. I should not be pushed into buying something where I'll have to go in there and spend twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to bring it back up to where I live at.
Here, if I can.
Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is open for CR thirteen ten.
Hamilton, your appeal, Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four zero three seven. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. At the last meeting, August twenty-second, at last minute until two o'clock in the morning, nothing was decided on for A because this council, since we always talk about decorum and proper protocol, you attempted, if you wanted the case, to combine A, B, along with the site plan. As you have it listed on this agenda, it's two separate hearings. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions about A. Now, if you're lumping them together, then that would mean I get ten minutes to speak. And since I don't get ten minutes to speak and I'm only going to get five, then I'm going to be talking about public hearing A because that was an unresolved issue. Mr. Lance, I think you were on to something when you asked the question.
I'm not answering.
I pointed to him, but I'm looking at you.
Well.
Now, let's, don't try to bully me now because it's not going to work.
I'm not trying to bully you.
Now, you heard what Ms. English said, let's try to be professional and appropriate, don't treat me like your daughter. I'm a grown woman.
So is I, Your Honor.
Okay. And you're a little bit younger than my dad.
Make your comments to the chair, please.
Okay, so, Mr. Lance was correct. When he was attempting to ask a couple of questions and you all were distracting him, when I heard Mr. Lance attempting to ask, and he can correct me, he wanted to know, when you talked about the site, the master plan was approved, there's a couple of things going on. You approved for the company at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a master plan, so I think you voted on that. I don't recall that master plan ever coming back, being reviewed, or discussed with the residents, nor do I think you guys have a copy of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar obsolete master plan. Then I think the third question was, when did council approve the master plan? So if you would like to set the record straight for public hearing A, and I want it noted on the official record, not the abbreviated record, when did you approve the master plan? When did you review the master plan? Do you have a copy of it? And are you speaking of the approval that you gave to authorize the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars fee to be played, be paid, to do an obsolete master plan? So if you want to answer those questions real quick.
Mr. Crowe, I'm going to recruit. The question is you?
I can easily answer the one regarding the adoption of the master plan.
No, I want the other question too, now.
A public hearing was, through the chair, a public hearing was held on April thirteenth, two thousand nine. Council approved the master plan with a four to one vote on April thirteenth, two thousand nine.
Okay. You want to see it?
Yes, I'd like to see a copy of the master plan.
Through the chair? Oh, show her what you just read. She just, yeah, she'll.
No, show me what you just read and show me the master plan, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar obsolete master plan.
Every master plan is obsolete the minute that it's done because time moves on. So to refer to it as an obsolete master plan, everything, every master plan is obsolete.
But we talked about how we are visionary in doing things before they're done and doing more with less, so how could you pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a plan that six months before it was even finished? And you guys approved it before it was finished.
First of all, I don't think it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, check your records.
I think it was two hundred dollars.
It was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, check your records.
It doesn't matter. But the master plan, were you sure of the master plan? That is the master plan that we went through and then approved?
Yeah, let me see the letter because that was my next question.
Through the chair. I was reading from the official regular meeting minutes on April thirteenth, two thousand nine, and resolution which passed the master plan.
I thought we don't have official minutes, we have abbreviated minutes, right, Madam Currit? Through the chair.
Go ahead, answer your question.
We have official minutes, Mr. Chair.
Actually, our minutes are more thorough than are required by Robert's rules.
Well, I wish we could do some other things like Robert's rule.
Harry, can I see that?
And then I heard the mayor say at the August the twenty-second meeting that it's important to deal with truth, so while they're pondering over that information, I just want to ask the question. Did you make a pledge to the field though that had not been paid, but there's a rule that the county didn't make?
Would you keep your comments to the?
I'd like some truth about that.
Would you keep your comments?
Well, while I'm checking it out.
Notice that, Mr. Lance is looking at the minutes, but your five minutes are still running.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure.
You're at the microphone.
I want to make sure that this is a public hearing A, that this is public hearing A about the master plan, which was not resolved. Then there is a separate hearing, ZR thirteen ten, and you have site plans down here which is not a public hearing. So if you're going to be talking about site plans as it relates to a public hearing, then those are three separate hearings for the record.
Mr. Crowe, was public hearing A, the material for public hearing A, was that resolved?
No.
I'm talking to Mr. Crowe. Was that resolved on August twenty-second?
No.
Public hearing A was held. There was lengthy discussion, close to three hours on IMA.
But you combined them.
Would you please be serious enough to listen to the answer?
The action by the council was postponed to a certain, which was tonight, but the public hearing was concluded on August twenty-second.
No, it was not. He was right about what he said, that you did a three-hour discussion purposely trying to distract these people to leave, you turned the air conditioner on full blast to make it cold with about five of us in here, using up electricity and running the air conditioning bill. That issue was not resolved because you attempted to combine A, B, and the site plan together. Now, we're talking about a decorum here and proper procedure and Robert's Rules of Order, and I did say something about it at the last meeting, that those are two separate issues, public hearing A, public hearing B, and the site plan is just a discussion amongst you guys, it is not a take action kind of a thing.
Your comments, Your Honor.
So can you answer that question? If this is a separate hearing, so I'll be back to talk about B, ZR thirteen ten.
Public hearing A.
I'll be back to talk about B, ZR thirteen ten, since they turned the microphone off. So I want to be.
The public hearing was held.
I'm speaking about public hearing A on the agenda, I'm speaking about A.
The material, you can leave the microphone, I can still tell you what it is. The public hearing for A was held, but no decision was made. We're going to make the decision tonight. Public hearing A already has had, has been held. It was held on August twenty-second with a decision delayed until tonight.
So then.
So the fact that you, I opened.
Talk about public hearing B, ZR thirteen ten.
I opened up public hearing ZR thirteen ten. You chose to use your five minutes to talk about public hearing A, your five minutes are up.
Then that's not proper procedure, you're not going by.
I opened up public hearing ZR thirteen ten.
But you have on the paper, public hearing A, it was not resolved.
It was.
You postponed it.
We had the public hearing.
But you can't, when you put them on the agenda separate according to Robert's Rules of Order, they're separate public hearings. You cannot combine two different subjects and make it one public hearing. Now, add your city attorney according to the Robert's Rules of Order.
The decision.
You cannot do that.
The decision was delayed until tonight. The hearing was held on August twenty-second.
So why did you put it on the agenda for public hearing A? That's my question.
For the decision.
So it is a separate issue from B, zoning, ZR thirteen ten, according to Robert's Rules of Order.
Apparently, we're not getting any questions. Mr. Attorney?
Why is the microphone turned off?
Why was the mic, I don't know.
Because they do that all the time. I don't need a microphone, I was a cheerleader. I can speak loud.
Mr. President, please check and make sure that's on.
It's now on, see, it would be making a do, 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 do sound.
Do you plug it?
Now it's on, see? When it takes this sound, it's on. When it doesn't, it's off. I heard it turn off.
Mr. Attorney, could you perhaps explain it better than I'm trying to about public hearing A and B?
Mr. President, state law requires that one public hearing be held with regard to a proposed amendment to the master plan. That public hearing was held on August twenty-second, and if you look on the agenda, that's specifically noted, states after IMA, in parentheses, "public hearing held on August twenty-second, two thousand eleven." So you have correctly ruled that although you're going to have to vote on IMA tonight, you don't have to conduct a second public hearing regarding that issue. And I agree that you are now conducting a public hearing as required by law with regard to the zoning, which is IBD.
Well, I'm not clear on this agenda because there's two separate public hearings on here.
Well, I'm sorry, you heard the.
So now, since you're going to not be according to the agenda, which you say you faithfully followed to the chief, on another subject matter I'm going to discuss for two and a half minutes, B, and then the other two and a half minutes for another.
No, you're out of order.
I'm going to change and get my five minutes the way I.
You're out of order because I have.
Are we going to have public hearing B now?
We, you use your five minutes to talk about.
I was under the impression we were talking about A. All you said on there was that the public hearing was held.
No, I didn't.
It didn't arrive at anything, so this agenda was not clear to me.
When I opened the public hearing.
Why was it on here if it was not going to be a public hearing, is my question.
Because we are going to make a decision on the issue.
Why did you even put it on here?
Because we have to make a decision.
But you put it on here indicating that it is a public hearing.
Mr. President, that's why it was noted, as I pointed out, it was the agenda.
It should have been on here. It should have been on here.
It's saying specifically that the public hearing was already held on August twenty-second. So the, the agenda is not misleading at all.
The agenda is very misleading. Anything that's on this agenda means that it will be discussed tonight. That's how it's always been.
Your break over your five minutes, and if you, you had the issue explained to you, and now it's becoming argumentative whether or not.
You're making it argumentative because you want to, you want to do these insults and everybody's bully. So hey, I'm standing here.
Uh, would you please move away from the microphone? So that anyone else that wants to talk about ZR.
Thank you very much. I'll be talking about B and C together for my five minutes for the public hearing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on ZR thirteen ten? Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Stephanie English, two eight seven three five, Nancarlos, Southview, four eight zero seven six. Normally, when I come to the mic on the hearing, um, I'm always in support of the big business, um, development. I support a lot of the tax payment programs. I actually support our education endeavors here in Southview, which was having so many stellar universities. However, as a homeowner, as a homeowner, I want to tell you that this could impact residents. This is a big issue. It is a college. You're talking about freshmen, and I can tell you this with the Bradford Academy issue. I can tell you as the resident that orders the Higher Power Baptist Church in Southview Christian School, with that small entity for almost a dozen years, I've been impacted along with other neighbors. It's like putting on a suit jacket. You were wearing a forty-two ten years ago, and now you want to flex because you got fat, and now you need a forty-eight jacket or a fifty jacket. When you stretch and flex, you stretch streams, you bust seams. This is the example that I have to present that this is what's going to happen to the residents. It all sounds very good right now. The promises, the, the attempt to have, uh, you know, a relationship building opportunity, that will get old. It will kind of be dismissed two, three, four years down the line. I believe that the dean of students will try to hold firm, but I have a twenty-year-old son at Michigan State University. He is much more subtle as a junior than he was as a freshman. A lot of times, you cannot control the growth. The people that are presenting presentations, the business side of the university, leadership that's here to present this, they go home to their homes, which is more of a sanctuary, when you don't have to deal with the impact of the university. That could be forthcoming. I have made recommendations and other, uh, meetings for the Lawrence Tech University to be more proactive, not just be barbecue, but go to another system that has worked. Go to leaders, find out what they did to mend a lot of the adversarial conversations that were going on with those homeowners as the leader project was being built. That has been successful. I don't know what tools they used or what diplomas, what diplomatic ways that they had. But evidently, the result was such that there was the approachment onto the residents. But the example that I have is smaller, and I am impacted by it as a homeowner, by a very small school and a church and the impact. I've had chicken balls in my yard from the baseball game. I have thirty-six balls that have come into my yard that I've collected. It sounds good at the beginning, but understand something. The people, the architects, the president, all of the department heads that are presenting this presentation is not in their backyard. And like I said, it's like any chat. We stretch, we break the screen. All of that foliage and all of that garden material that is going to act as a barrier may be obsolete as more students come forward, maybe not this generation, not first-year freshmen, but as the incoming classes come, it can be impactful. You can't control it. The bigger entity is always pressing on the smaller entity. And I do hope that you will look at these kind of situations, that the residents, the homeowners, the taxpayers, their interests need to be protected, even though they're the smaller entity. Do not just listen to the bigger entity because they have all the students here. And again, this is in contradiction to what I normally come to the podium about. I am the person, the citizen, that actually supports any of the business expansions that you have. But I never saw those projects have the potential impact of pushing against neighbors in a negative, impacting way. And like I said, those making the presentations here, if not in their backyard, they need to go home to their sanctuary. And I'm asking that my neighbors, I don't live near them, but they're my neighbors, that their sanctuary be protected also.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on public hearing ZR thirteen ten? Come to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
My name is Perry Jackson, and I live at two five five, nine zero third drive. I'm one of the people that everyone third drive has impacted by my mom's tech. I'm a senior citizen and I live alone. Right now, I'm afraid because I live across the street from the red house. My mom's tech, I am not, I have projects. But what are they going to do about the residents? There's two red houses across the street from me. It's like last night, that was party at two o'clock in the morning. I was listening to someone shooting out the firecrackers on the firework. So I'm really afraid for my life. I don't have anyone to check on me. And I sell them to the police on that street. So, but you may tell that they don't live on that street. But we are being impacted by mom's tech and more students coming on third drive. So I've been there over thirty-six years since mom's tech have purchased projects. My house has been broken into. So I am one of those persons that can affect it by what mom's tech is trying to do and bring what happens to the area. And they are not looking at us about to take pictures because they're there, and they are not concerned about the residents on that street. So I am there to protect my job and my life. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's got the microphone?
Michael Creighton, two five four four seven, third drive. I want to commend Lawrence Tech on their good presentation. I think you did a good job with the presentation to be helping our team here tonight. And this is what I said last time. This is the big fish eating up the little fish. This is what this is. Next to my house, so fraternity house, you were. I had to call our department because of a big bonfire several times. And I had to call the city police officers. I had to call Lawrence Tech security. And what these students do, they don't climb their cars. They just walk to the party. And when the security comes, Lawrence Tech's security comes, and when we call the city police, they runs in the woods and remain quiet. And the police walks around the apartment, people walk around the house, they, they go, it's okay, I'm looking out, I'm looking because it's next to me. I got to go to work the next day. And I'm looking out my window, and all this commotion is going on. They don't, I mean, they don't care. Lawrence Tech invited us to a get-together Thursday. They never said one thing, sat down with us, said one thing about what they're trying to do. They invited us for hot dogs and beer. And what we're trying to do is get away from the beer. We want to get away from the beer. And they invited us and gave us, and off was beer. I mean, we're not saying.
Would you be deliberate to, oh, council? I'm sorry, Madam.
We're not saying don't grow. We're not saying that. Because we want to see positive things in Southfield. I've been here twenty years. I've been living in my home twenty years. And we want to see Lawrence Tech, um, grow. But if you got this master plan, because other investors were saying, wait a minute, I want to build a dormitory over there also. If Lawrence Tech have a master plan, why don't you guys get together and sell me your property? So we can build dormitories in future. They want to do that. They're asking us for that. As soon as they found out that Lawrence Tech, Lawrence Tech going to do something, they're saying, okay, well, we'll be on some. But we're here for Lawrence Tech. But don't just eat us up and overpower us. Come to us and sit down with us. You know, if you're offering something very reasonable, we might say, Mr. President, fine, let's work with that. But you never said, you never said any, the order became, why won't you invite the residents to a hot dog get-together? I couldn't, couldn't be stoked. Time to read. And you put beer in front of us. I'm a professional. I went to college. Most people on my block went to college. Our home is our biggest investment in our life. And you're going to go home, wide neighborhood, everything's smooth.
Would you, would you like to answer the council question?
They, I, I lived next door, and I'm, Mr. President, it was, uh, I heard things, I heard names were called, and this was two o'clock in the morning, because I'm next door, and they knew that I called. And I wouldn't even repeat those things. I am not saying that we are, we're not saying that we are against you guys, but you guys are just overpowering us, and that is not right. When we put you guys in office so that you, so that we can have a voice for these things. Just think about yourself. Think about your kids. Think about your daughters. I get up, we have to walk and pick up their cans. I had to do all of those kind of things, papers. That circle hasn't been peaceful. I raised my kids there. And I must commend Lawrence Tech for this. They do have the security officers coming around. They do. And when we called about the grass, they kind of got on it. But we're in a situation now, and we're talking about money now. It's all about money, you know? If, if, why don't you just sit us down and say, let's try to work something out here? We have a twenty-five year plan, and we don't want someone else to come in and build a dormitory on our campus in twenty-five years because you sold your house to another investor. Why don't we say, sit down and say, what would make you comfortable? And let's work with you.
Your five minutes are up. But I thought you had a question, but I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes.
Uh, you made a comment that, uh, there were bonfires.
Correct.
Now, we've had several meetings, and you, you brought this up.
Before any, so.
Yeah. Um, you brought up before that there was a bonfire. My question to you is, was the bonfire since that meeting that we had?
No, this was when the fraternity, they don't live there anymore. It was when they were there. They were there for two and a half years. And, and it was held.
Okay, since, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, since we've been working on this, and the neighbors have brought some concerns, we've tried to work with Lawrence Tech, and they have promised that they would be working on these, and we heard tonight, okay, a lot of things. My question is, is the situation better now than it was when you came the first time?
Mr. President, the last time we met, it was about a month ago. Uh, once anybody find out that, hey, you know, they're looking at us. We got to clean up things. We got to call a meeting with the people who live in that, in that, uh, house, and we got to let them know, hey, you got to get your act together. So Lawrence Tech had their students there with ties and dressed up and acting mild and mean. They had them there like that. They had a wonderful thing. Okay? But anybody that dressed up for a date, well, when you start drinking alcohol, you turn into someone else.
I understand that. My question is, um, first of all, can we give Lawrence Tech an opportunity to make sure that there's, that continues? And since they've already taken action, and you've admitted that things are better now, can we give Lawrence Tech an opportunity to make sure they stay there?
Mr. President, um, you definitely say that. I think what you need to hear is the opinion of the other residents. There are a lot of residents not here tonight, and they're closer to students now than I, than I do now. Because those students who were living close to me, I complained to the dean of students, I called him on the phone, I went to talk to the chief of security, okay? Other residents did too. And the only thing that actually got their attention is when the students were drunk one night and they start turning and messing with the mailboxes. And when I said that, then Lawrence Tech started doing something about that because that could be a problem. And I'm not saying, if we're here tonight, not saying don't grow. We're here tonight, not, uh, we're not saying that we're not concerned about, uh, um, Lawrence Tech growing, because we know that Lawrence Tech plays a major part in shaping Southfield. We do know that. We just want Lawrence Tech to even act like they're interested in what we have to say and not just eat us up because you are the big fish, and we are the smaller one.
I think that we have their attention. And while you said that you were only here for one meeting, we've had a series of meetings through the planning commission and the site plan committee, and, uh, we also gave Lawrence Tech, uh, the comments that we had heard from all the separate, separate meetings. So there have been a number of opportunities for the, for the people on Circle Drive to come. The planning commission, uh, Mr. Crowe, how many meetings did you have with the planning commission?
We had at least three meetings. Like, nineteen discussions.
Three meetings, did work, did you have residents from?
Considerable number of residents.
Okay. So there have been, uh, residents from Circle Drive that came to planning commission meeting? And I understand it's your time, but I've been asking you a question, so.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to have to, uh.
You say it, hold on a second. I would love to hear their stories because you, you said you have had several meetings with Lawrence Tech. You did say residents.
And I went back, you were at the. At the, at the planning commission, when the planners were talking about, representatives from Lawrence Tech were at that meeting, and residents were there to express their concerns.
Did you guys allow?
Excuse, resident.
Excuse me.
Lawrence Tech held an open house that I did attend. Everyone was invited, Circle Drive included. Invitations were sent out. I don't think anyone from Circle Drive showed up to that meeting at Lawrence Tech.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Yes.
You received the letter, right?
Well, let me ask, let me ask.
You received the letter.
Let me not jump, jump to conclusion. Let me ask the people from Lawrence Tech where the letters went, where the invitations went. Um, Mr. Verizon, if you could step away from the microphone so Mr. Verizon can answer the question. The open house, you, you said it there.
The open house was extended to the community. It was published on our webpage. We delivered it to the city clerk's office with the understanding that they might be putting it on their webpage. I don't know if they did or not. And we did extend individual letters to all the members of the council, a lot of the city officials, I think we even sent the city attorney, sent the city clerk's office, sent one to Mr. Sharet, we sent it to Mr. Crowe. We wanted as many to turn out to hear, uh, what anyone had to say and including what we had to offer about what our plans were. So we, we did direct the letters to all of the city people. We did not address letters to individual members of, of Circle Drive for that meeting. Also, it was.
I misunderstood. Through the chair, through the chair. I misunderstood. I thought it went to everyone, uh, including people on Circle Drive.
Through the chair. So just as a clarification. The meeting was announced at the public hearing on August twenty-second, that they were intending to both have an open house by Mr. Verizon. And I would, I'd like to ask, um, the dean of students to reiterate, um, his attempt to contact the homeowners since, since our, our last meeting, because I think that's an important, just clarification.
Okay.
So, your answer.
Um, I, it's sad everybody's been, uh, it's sad everybody's gone. I went to the neighborhood, I went door to door. I also, uh, went to the family Wednesday as well. Um, I just want to put up a couple of things too. Mr. Creighton, you've always been very polite. I know we spoke to you once last, about a year ago with those kids at house. We did a Dixons and Sporting player. We had a proper law, given them due time to get out of there. So, you know, um, I. times to get out of there, so, you know, um, I, I do apologize when I wanted to have any residents, but we did remove them within four days from that. Once I became aware of that, I said, well, I'm being directed, Mr. Vaughn. Uh, the second thing is, is, um, that I would like to say is, we didn't serve hot dogs, and I don't think you should, we're there on Thursday, we served grilled chicken breast, cheeseburgers, pepperoni cheese salad. We did a little bit better at hot dogs. I mean, I agree, fried would be nice, but we did better at hot dogs, uh, than at that.
If you serve hot dogs, well, the, the first thing that you, and you say, because, um, they, council.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, your time is up.
My time is up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Curly?
I've heard a lot of comments, uh, we've heard of the Planning Commission, and we've heard of, uh, the August twenty-third meeting. I remember that night very, very well, went long. Uh, we, you know, we, we tried, even before those meetings started, to try to be responsive to the community and sensitive to them. I'll give you a couple of examples. The existing housing that we have on the campus is four story, and that's inefficient among the floors that we've been building. You get above that, and the construction becomes more complex, complex, and more costly. And below four floors, it's the less, the least efficient. The building we're proposing here, we could have proposed four floors. We didn't do that. Number one, we keep designing, we keep architecture, and we keep sensitivity to neighbors and, and people that we're responsible to. When we proposed two-story buildings, it comes to two reasons. One, it would have been overpowering and too much to try to sell you a four-story in that area. It would have been the wrong thing for us to do, and as a result, I think you would have sent them through anyway. So we didn't even try that. We never talked about doing that. We never proposed that. We knew what was wrong to do, so we didn't do it. When we developed the site, we developed it as much as we could with the landscaping, planning of our hundred and seventy trees that were planted on the side, almost all of them on there, but we couldn't even fit anymore on. Some number like twenty or whatever will be placed elsewhere on the campus. But we did all that we could on the site. Then we went to the Plant Commission, and we get an opportunity to respond to the neighbors who talked about who are the buyers in landscaping or whatever, and we add in landscaping, as one drawing shown earlier by Martin, that showed a separate line of trees along the right of way. We did that, along with the trees and the shrubs, so that as it grows together, it includes high any, any amount of high pressure or anything for students trapping it back towards. We responded to the community. We, we tried to be answerable to what their needs are. One other thing, and that's the manner in which you build a community on a campus, and that's to have housing that's clustered. As you look at our housing south, which is nine stories across Tenma, that was on the Tulane Highway once upon a time, or Tulane Road. Now it's four plus a turn lane, I mean, that's quite a bit of traffic. If we had to do over, we would not be on the south side of Tenma. We would want it on the north side. That's how you build a community, is have it closer together and clustered. This is geared toward that clustering on the north side of Tenma. There is no way for us to use that available close by, and building a remote site is not an answer for us. That doesn't build community on the campus. Is it a changing neighborhood? Yes, I can't deny that. You know that, I know that, the Plant Commission has spoke for that. They spoke and said yes to, to the residents there that said, yeah, it's a changing community, and in a way, that's better for it, because sooner or later, L T U is gonna need your property. And it's true. Someday, we're gonna need that property, and it's a big advantage, because when we need it and they're ready to sell. We care enough about community and not try to pressure anyone to sell it. We wait till they put it on the market and are asking, or they come to us. So I don't want to take more of your time, but I just want you to know that we have legitimately and in good faith done everything we could to satisfy the neighbors and willing to do more. We've agreed to have an extra passage of, uh, security go through there at the, in the night slot, and if that turns out not to be enough, we'll do more than that. Uh, we're gonna have cameras on the outside of the building, not to watch the neighbors, but to watch around our building for security, so we'll be able to monitor students and how it's going and how it's happening. I think it, it doesn't help your time, so I'll stop there, but hope you'll see fit to, uh, move the paper of our projects.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would speak to CR thirteen-ten? Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes.
Jonathan May, two-five-nine-two-eight, Casey Street. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of, uh, Southfield. This is my first time on speaking, so please bear with me. Um, I'm also a student at Lawrence Tech, I came here voluntarily tonight to, uh, do some research for my I C M design project. Um, and upon, uh, seeing what, uh, Lawrence Tech proposed today, I got a lot of great insight for what I'm planning to use for my own project, as well as, uh, wanted to address the council and say, I think it's a great idea, um, for the enhancement of not only Lawrence Tech, but for Southfield for its growth, and, uh, to jumpstart our , uh, the professionals.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in?
Good evening, Sam Jawad, two-six-five-nine-five Evergreen. Good evening, members of council and mayor. I just wanted to touch upon some of the key points of what I've heard about this proposal tonight. They may go in various different directions, because it wasn't a pre-planned speech, but it's just kind of my take on what I've heard tonight. I'd like to say that, being a business owner in Southfield for nearly twenty years, and listening to both sides of, of the stories here, both L T U and the residents, that I couldn't agree with the residents more. Um, but that also being said, that I'm also in favor of L T U's proposal for expanding their, uh, dormitories and their campus. President Walker stated that L T U's been actively involved in the community since nineteen fifty and has been a, a partner with the city of Southfield. I think Lawrence Tech is synonymous with the city of Southfield, and it's truly one of our gems. Um, I think the economic impact that, uh, this type of development could have on the community is a positive thing, as well as the current six hundred faculty members and forty-five hundred students that currently populate L T U is a positive scenario. The mention of the barbecue and the get-together that came to be, uh, as this, as this project was, was put before the residents, I think that Lawrence Tech really should look at, as opposed to waiting for something to be at stake, should always, and continue to look to maintain this relationship, not only in the past, but now and in the future as well, and ensure that this is a positive thing for everybody involved. I don't think that one entity is more important than the other, or one should hold, uh, a larger weight, uh, when it comes to these types of scenarios. Um, Lawrence Tech has been here for a long time, but there's also residents who have been here for a long time as well. There's a number of other positive things never brought to light, including the bike route, uh, which will link to Civic Center as well as to Penn Island, and ultimately, I hope in the future, it'll link to our city center area. Uh, this is definitely a positive scenario for the citizens. Um, Keeler, who was, uh, who, who was a resident here for, uh, seventeen years, I think that it's, it's important that a relationship is maintained with residents such as Mr. Keeler and Mr. Crichton, who have also been actively involved in Southfield just as, practically as long as L T U has been there as well. Again, I think this is good for the residents, I think this is good for business, I think it's good for the city. But again, in taking some of the comments that the residents have, have made tonight, I think it's extremely important that L T U work with them and look to get their input, uh, prior to putting the shuttles into ground, and if that means lighting, if that means fencing, if that means security, if that means emergency phones, that means if students aren't involved in picking up garbage, uh, students involved in maintaining maybe community gardens, so that there is a joint common area for recreation between the dormitories as well as the residents who do continue to live on Circle Drive, I think those are all things that, that should be looked at. So overall, I'd like to say I support this request, and urge council to do the same. I think it's a good thing, but it needs to be mutually beneficial for all parties involved, and that, again, I urge L T U to reach out to the neighbors and the neighbors to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Uh, my name is Phil Lucas, I am the super governor president at Lawrence Tech, and I live at two-one-two-one-one West Tenma. Um, I've heard a lot of discussion tonight, um, I have not been scripted or anything like that, I just felt that I could, and, uh, expressed a little bit of how I feel. Um, I'm from Monroe, Michigan, I attended Lawrence Tech and am attending Lawrence Tech because I heard about it from my brother. Um, I would not have known about Southfield, I would not have known about this university, and telling you that ever since I've gotten here. I, I love this town, and I think that, um, I, I've, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Yes, we're students, and we make mistakes, and that's part of college, and I think that it should be a testament to our type of students, that they're in suits at a barbecue, because they develop as professionals. And every one of us, um, who develops into a professional, and I'm sure all of you have developed in your professional lives, have all started somewhere, and for our students, it's at Lawrence Tech, it's at Southfield, and we dream, and we make mistakes, but we strive to be like, like you. And as I'm sitting back here and, uh, hearing this, hearing this discussion, um, I just wanna say thanks for listening to everyone, and more importantly, I wanna say that I personally know all the residents that live on Circle Drive, um, I've also talked to the super residents, I've also talked to all the residents that came out, um, that are not students, that came to our barbecue, and I think that everyone has, they have their points, um, but I personally talked to all these super residents, they are all great men and women, and, um, with, with that being said, a lot of these men and women are gonna live in Southfield because of their experiences, because they love this place, because they love Lawrence Tech, and more importantly, because they volunteer in the community, they clean up our roads, they volunteer with the kids at the high schools, and that's just what it means to be a student, to be a community worker, for this college town that we all love. So with that, um, starting with questions, President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to, uh, speak in this? Come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is, um, Richard Vaughn, I'm, I'm in two-five-three-three, I used to live in Detroit, and, um, I moved to Circle Drive because I was looking for a different place for my children to grow up. When I first moved to Circle Drive, um, got a nice deal on the house, it was real nice. In fact, uh, when I moved into the house, there were ten children living in the house. I believe the family name was Luteran, I believe maybe that's the weatherman that we see on Channel seven. When I first moved in the house, I needed to make some change, so I started putting up lights, because when you come from the city of Detroit, you know, you think about security. But my next door neighbor said, you don't wanna do that, this is a nice place. Don't put up lights, you'll enjoy the country and the city. And that's what Circle Drive was done for. I come to raise my two children, one is a doctor, one is in the Marines, almost lost him twice over in Iraq, graduated from Southfield High School. I had a wonderful time raising my children on Southfield Drive, brought the children from my church. Everybody loved the country and the city, as Circle Drive is called. You talk about harmonious living? I think my neighbors have made clear, there is no harmonious living. It's quite evident. Many times, you call the police, you call services to come out and bring peace, picking up garbage off our streets, it's supposed to be a peaceful place. Yes, I went to the barbecue, they had chicken and hamburgers, I was told the hamburgers wasn't that good, and so I didn't eat any of that. I asked the, the students, the persons, I believe it's a camp, I said, so President, you said yes? I said, is he gonna come to talk to us? Um, President didn't come to talk to us. I saw him keeping on the deck, but he didn't come out and greet us and shake my hand, or say, I wanna talk to you. Harmonious living? You still have questions in my heart. What is the dotted line here? If we put that picture back up there on the screen, they have a master plan, the dotted line is what I saw. You wanna take it over? How many movies have we seen about that taking over? We believe in proof, we believe in what Lawrence Tech is doing, but the big thing here is you do wanna take our neighborhood. Maybe not today, but we know in twenty-five year plan, you're gonna take it anyway. So what have we left with, is the question? Harmonious living? I don't think it's gonna happen. Evidence to that effect is shown there. But if you wanna be fair with us, then come to the table like my neighbor said. Property values is going down, and we're gonna suffer, we're gonna suffer from that. Can they wait it out? They can afford it to. Harmonious living? I don't think so.
Who wishes to speak in this? Give your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
My name is Karen Springer, I'm a visitor from the city of Warren. I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud to be your neighbor. I travel in Southfield, I really love it. After hearing this both sides today, and as a visitor, it's sad to see the residents getting beaten up, very badly, so badly. It appalls me that the law of the land still belongs to the residents who own it. I hear the ownership is going to the school, they're buying the property. Now they come to rezonies. The rezonies should never be done until the last property person is gone. That is the law of the land, our constitutional rights. Big business has money, the universities, the schools, they have money. They buy out the little people, then squeeze out the little more and a little more. It's a sad day for being here, being a resident of the city of Warren, that Southfield has a beautiful neighborhood with a wonderful people that's being squeezed out. You're talking apples, and you talk to oranges. The oranges are getting squeezed, you put them back on the shelf, they die. An apple, you make apple pie. Their sides sound really good, but it doesn't sell. People own the property, seek the constitutional rights that our forefathers fought to own land. Think of the Indians, we stole their land, we treated them badly, we fought wars. Not a big business is due to us, the homeowners. It's a sad day. Do the right thing. I hear it all the time, do the right thing for the citizen. They do not have the money or the development coming to the planning commission. People can't come during the day. Writing letters might be an answer. I don't see a special meeting called from the council to get two people together, sit down and put it in writing, and really get to the issue. I hear the issue, I don't see a solution. The mayor loves to put points. Communication, communication only is good as little written conduct, written rules to obey rights. A professional person speaks well from the heart, knows what to say. I'm speaking from the heart, I'm a visitor, don't shut the citizens out. Of hope comes sense, the law of the land belongs to the people who live there first. Thank you. Thank you.
Give your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
We've talked about this for a long time. What Lawrence Tech is asking is to rezone the property they already own. It's not any property that anybody else owns. In fact, they're not even asking to rezone all the property that they own. They're only asking to rezone a piece of the property that they own. So it's not like they're squeezing anybody out because they already own, they already own the property that they're going to rezone. Secondly, they aren't trying to force anybody by forcing them out of their homes. As I said before, what they're doing is they're waiting until the property goes for sale or the people come to Lawrence Tech and say, "I want to sell my property to you." So it's not like they're confiscating the land. They already own it and that's what they've been doing for 25 years.
I think if you look at contrast in environmental law, it's called nuisance. And once a school becomes a nuisance to the residents, that's a problem. So I'm saying, if you go to remember karma, you can come back to the table both sides. You're the resident, you're the legislature. Put down the writing, the problems, look at the police report, look at what the police do to the residents' homes. If you have a quiet neighbor, keep it quiet. We don't need the nuisance. That's probably where I'm really getting at.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue?
Hi. I'm a visiting, we are going to Lawrence Tech.
May I give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Shannon Schiner. I come from Clinton Township. And I came here for listening and give an idea of what these cities do. How many minutes? We have six minutes. You have five. Warren has three minutes. Each city township has different methods, so it's really interesting. So you learn to rule. You learn each place has different rules to follow. So after trying to educate here and learning and finding others to speak, believe me, with education, and I don't think our education is bad. I think it's bad to have attitude in life. What you, how you build law in the world, it doesn't matter where you live, who you are, what nationality, so attitude is everything. So I have maybe, you know, I'll take an example like companionship. Companion plans are very interesting. And the word companionship, they get along. So if you put plans together to get along, they will survive. But if you put plans together that don't get along, they're going to hide and fight one another. So you can do the brief jump mail, which I thought was very interesting. So I find it basically difficult. Look at people, you know, how they get along. You can tell in thirty seconds if they're going to get along by the fact that they're each other. It doesn't have to take how to talk to one another to align with life. If people could read each other's minds, we would be surprised what little people really think. Sometimes we're all good actors and all behave, and then somebody doesn't get to the point.
I hate to stop you, but this is a public hearing on this particular subject. So you need to, you need to, tell your remarks to this.
Okay, I'm getting started. Do we really need building plans to make good students and we found very good protective people? I think that we're missing the boat. I think education has to go back to the very beginning. If you build buildings, it does not mean you produce good students. It's the teachers, it's the people, and everything on the board. You get one bad apple in there, the effect of the whole. So that's what I'm saying here. So you can fight all amongst yourselves, but there's no proportion, you can know there's booking ads or something. Everybody's fighting to kill what they want. And this is what I see too, everybody's fighting, they're spending twenty-five years, they want to get more land, build a school so we can employ students, students from all over the world. Oh, it's nice, but you know what? Reputation is everything too. So if you build a nice place, but you don't have the reputation to go with it, well, you're not going to attract the people to come. So you have a dilemma here. So good luck and figuring this out. I hope everybody can sit down, put down something, and look at it and, okay, I want to live here with why. What's going to benefit here the most? Students, the people. Who's going to get the most out of this? We all should have something to say, "I love this place," first. I want to see everybody rushing here to live in Southfield. Isn't that great? I don't see that. Looking at it, it's every place has its problems. So good luck. Thank you.
Good talk. Good talk.
My name is John Petty. And I live in Southfield, I've been here for thirty years. I'm at St. Jean's, two oh three Altus Street. And it's, I wasn't going to say anything until I hear people coming from other neighborhoods talking about community. I think my neighbors in Southfield and on Circle Drive have adequately stated their case and there's issues that probably needs to be resolved. I've been on the board of trustees for Lawrence Tech for nineteen years. I'm not speaking as a trustee because like you folks, we only have power when we're in the group and we make decisions. But I would like to give you a view of thirty thousand feet. Right now, we're in the process of putting together a university. Our intent is to have a student-centric, green light university. And one of the first elements, one of the elements in our strategic plan is the student residence. Seems like a minor kind of thing. With Joe Burrows, the buildings themselves are very spittle relative to residence. Now, there are issues from what I heard on Circle Drive that needs to be dealt with. But I didn't hear anything, quite frankly, that was relative to the buildings themselves. It seems to solve those problems quite reasonably as separates the residents even on Circle Drive. And Circle Drive is beautiful, the area, if you drive along Circle Drive, it's very pristine and I think it will remain that way. And as a matter of fact, the buildings that we've put up on the campus hasn't been just to make things not getting worse, it's actually to make things better environmentally. And I think that Southfield can attest to that. And Joe Burrows has told us, at least at the board meetings, that that's the case. And so we work with everything that we can, and again, when I need to board, when I need to board, to bring up some of the issues about the Circle Drive. But I think that what we're attempting to do here is make this whole activity, this whole area a college town that's better for all the residents of Southfield, of which I'm, including my friends and neighbors on Circle Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? Come to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
My name is Chris Mulroney. I'm a trustee, two eight five zero zero, Keister Road, Southfield. I'm a Southfield voter and I'm also a graduate from Lawrence Tech and I live at student college. And again, this is where the people live, it's a nice and quiet, and this is our home. And there's a certain amount of sentimental value. But then I hear all those things about not being responsive, and I would go, "Why? These wild going ons and all this stuff." And then I come find out, there's a lot of things of interest when that response in Lawrence Tech is not responsive. Then I find out the fraternity was close, I believe it was two and a half years ago before this prosecution started. Then I start hearing that, yep, security is responsive. And I visit a lot of the issues did get driven. So I'm hearing the residents saying, "No one's responding, no one's listening." Then as I listen further and I hear people question them, I hear that Lawrence Tech is responding. So I think there's been a little bit of misinformation here. I mean, this fraternity was close to me a half years ago. So that said, you know, I wonder what else is going on here. Right, I've heard three people indirectly ask for more money for the property. I was also a business developer, property developer at one time. So I realize there's some sentimental value, but I also think there's something else going on here. And I think that this would be very good for the city. And nobody gives it school and create a city that will walk the community. And I heard someone else to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi. My name is Vanessa Townsend and I have two addresses. The first one is my professional, which is two one two one one West Ten Mile.
That's fine.
I also live on twelve mile Southwood Road. I've been there since I was three years old with my parents and my sister. And I actually live in the city of Southfield. I'm proud of Southfield, this school's going to McIntyre Elementary, Bus D Center, which is the child development center for your middle school, and I graduated at Southfield Middle School. Um, I really am kind of upset that while I was at Lawrence Tech when I graduated in two thousand and three, I had no idea that I had an awful school in my backyard, which is Lawrence Tech and Marshall University. I had to go all the way out into East Lansing where I graduated from Marshall State. Was the whole reason why I decided to work for Lawrence Tech as well as go to school and pursue my graduate degrees, the technical and professional communications, is because it is in the city of Southfield. I'm within a quarter of miles of visiting my cousins that are going to Southwood High. I'm within two miles of seeing my parents who have been, like I said, our house for twenty-three years. I'm even three miles away from seeing my family, my sister and my four-year-old niece and my fourteen-year-old nephew. So I'm very proud of what Lawrence Tech has done in the city of Southfield. And a lot of these people at Circle Drive look like my parents. And so I take their concerns very seriously. I hope that their concerns with these future competitions that we have doesn't frown upon the decision to expand, because I think it will help the residents of Southfield. There'll be future partnerships and things like that. There's tons of summer camps and there's no place to put students in the summer camps because we're just growing too big. Everybody wants to chill and stay in our housing for a week. So we always have that opportunity to do that, which will be greatly beneficial for the arts and science we have in that Southwood Lake High School, as well as business and engineering we have in that Southwood High. Those things will greatly partnership. We need to look at Lawrence Tech as not as a separate entity, but as an auxiliary member of Southwood Public Schools. Because a lot of our students are from the city of Southfield and from the area, and they take great pride in the area. And I'm sorry that some of the residents feel that we're having, but the larger student body does feel that way. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue?
I didn't have a good comment for the gentleman who spoke about the arterial motor or whatever he was talking about.
Give your name and address.
My name is Sherry Bonner. I live at two five three three Circle Drive, Southfield, Michigan. My comment is, do you live on Circle Drive? I live on Circle Drive. I know what happens on Circle Drive. Yes, there have been problems on Circle Drive, and yes, they may have cleaned some up, but then children are going to be children, youth are going to be youth. We understand all that. But we live on Circle Drive, we know what happens on Circle Drive, and yes, there is sentimental value on Circle Drive for our homes. And we're asking that we do need, and we do talk. We understand all that. But we live on Circle Drive. The gentleman does not live. If there was an empty backyard, he probably would be doing the same thing. Thank you.
Come to the microphone, you have, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles Pittner. I'm the home at twenty-five two one five Service Drive. And I just want to support my fellow neighbors there, you know, about the noise, the garbage, you know, constantly picking up garbage in the yard as they're walking up and down the streets. You know, it's gone on for a lot of years. And, you know, I'm worried about the value of my house. If Lawrence Tech doesn't give me a fair deal on my house, how do I sell to somebody else? Nobody else is going to want to come into the neighborhood and buy the decent price if they know Lawrence Tech tried to buy up the land. So I just think the value of the housing is just going to go fall off the bottom. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question? You say that there's garbage and stuff up and down the street?
Yes.
Since we have started talking with Lawrence Tech, has that improved?
Not that I've noticed, no.
And where do you live on Circle Drive? So Lawrence Tech can make sure that if there are students that live in that area, they can get some students. Do you live on the back lawn of the peat or on the circle part of the lawn?
Back lawn of the peat.
The back lawn of the peat?
The first house on the west side of Circle Drive that you come to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If so, come to the microphone, you have five minutes. See, no, I'm declaring the public hearing closed. Ms. Perez?
I have a few questions for the gentleman from Lawrence Tech.
Which, which?
Lawrence Tech, yeah.
Mr. Perez?
Yeah. I think I heard you say you started buying the property, how many years ago?
About the mid-sixties. Early to mid-sixties.
Okay. Why at that time didn't you tell the residents that you were buying property to inform them the future plan? Very possible they would have sold out then when the selling was better and who were to have a free ride like today.
I have a question. I have a question. I have no idea why somebody didn't mention it to them back then. I'm just.
Well, I just thought of the idea that, or you didn't say anything to anybody.
I don't know.
That was a bad plan. Because if you said something to them, they would have sold the houses when they could get the money, that it was worth it. And you were to have a free ride in the whole area instead of now intruding upon the residents.
Well, I can't speak for why we didn't do it or didn't do anything.
Well, you represent Lawrence Tech now, I'm talking to you.
Well, I do represent now.
So if that gets right, one will know the answer.
I was speaking of, I was going to Lawrence Tech, so I was different. Literally, I was, I'm a graduate from there. So I can tell you a lot about Lawrence Tech, but I can't tell you why you did or didn't do anything about securing the property back then. But I can tell you that it is very common knowledge because people do come to us when they have their house up for sale. I know that they come to us most often first because they think of it the best place for us, and they probably love or do. There have been people that have come to us offering their house for sale and they've asked of us exorbitant, and we said, "Thank you," but no thank you. You're not interested in me at that price. So I don't know.
Any of these people who spoke tonight come to you? I'm sorry. Any of these people who were present tonight, did they come to you to sell the house? All of you the house?
Of those that were, that spoke tonight, I know of only one that has approached, and there may have been more, but I only know of one, and it was a couple of years ago and has hearsay. They did not approach me, they approached the vice president of finance.
Okay. Your president, Mayor Speaker Peter Worf, Ari Alwens, and he made a statement, "What's good for Lawrence Tech is good for the city." I remember the president, the general lawyer, about forty years ago, saying, "What's good for the general lawyer is good for the country." So I don't think the people will believe you. All right, I'm agree. The president said he's part of the community, still good for the community. What are you doing for the people now that are part of the community? These people own those houses in your building right close to their property. There's all the... With all the future problems and everything. What, what is he doing for the community?
Well, first of all, we're not real close to the neighborhood that's residing there. We are close to two of the properties that are at the top of the heap. And by we aren't close to those. And we are several properties away even from them. And so we are, when we build, we are still pretty close to the neighborhood. All of the neighbors have been touched with those symbols of course, any of the other properties.
Causing the residents to complain. And what they're complaining about is true. It's not a made up thing. Why should they be subjected to all the distress and strains of other people coming upon their property? And the noise and whatever else young people do? Isn't that bad for those people?
No, I'm also.
You want to expand?
I don't, I wouldn't want that happening in my neighborhood. And if it's something we should do something about, I'm agreeing. I would also suggest that it may not have the frequency that was implied here tonight. Students do have busy nights or they're academic pursuit. Now, do they have time to party? Yes. But how many of them do it that frequently? I mean, how much trash or garbage are we talking about? Doesn't make it right. And it doesn't mean it shouldn't stop. And it doesn't mean we shouldn't do something about that. And we will work with the community to make sure that that happens. Okay? But I don't believe, quite frankly, that it has the frequency that we're talking about. In fact, you mentioned in your question about going on their property. Specifically, that was asked, I don't know if it was at the last council meeting or if it was at planning commission, maybe at the planning commission meeting, where it was specifically alluded to that we were on their property. And so the question was pointedly asked, do they go on your property? Do they just ask? That's a whole other story. And the answer was no. They don't, they go past the house. I feel uncomfortable when they go in a group of four or five. The residents meant these students. And yes, they came prepared and wore ties and looked decent. But they were also students that were able to brag and tell of the master program, the major program that they were a part of, that they were second and third year students. And that they had going for, in some cases, dual degrees in engineering and science. I'd like to answer another question that you started to bring up and kind of went off with the question coming around. It was about the value of L T U to the community. I think the issue is partly, what's the future of L T U if we don't have this kind of facility? We hired a consultant to tell us some things that kind of knew. And one was that we can't keep looking in a sixty-mile radius to populate our university forever. Those days are gone. Now, we have looked outstate in the past and we have not done a very overt effort at doing that. But we have done something. Now we have been told that if we are to survive, we need to reach out. Outstate? Out of state and international. Sixty-mile radius isn't good enough anymore. We are competing with a lot of first-class institutions in the public sector who charge a lot more than us. And we need to reach out to those people and bring them in so that we can compete. Because other universities charge outstate resident rate, we charge the same. So we can compete.
That's still a solved problem. We're going to these homes now. They'll be out in the cold. How can we solve the problem now?
We're not forcing anybody out. We're not asking.
Don't have to force anybody out.
We're not even asking to rezone out to their property.
No, but if you, you build what you want to build, they will be forced to build.
No, they won't.
There's no way.
Yes, they will.
And another thing.
Another thing I have, I just know that.
You claim to be the owner of the dormitory. Basically, you're not the owner. You have a contractor building it and owning it. And you're going to lease that building. So you don't have anything to do with the building but leases. So you, you don't feel the pain or guilt. The guy who's building the dormitory, he doesn't give a damn because he's in business. He built the building and he's happy to lease it to you. He thinks he might.
Well, what, what control do you have over that building? The reality is. No. The reality is that he's developing it for our exclusive purpose. It is on a long-term lease that we have. Neither should, still don't own it. We own it at the end, in a capital lease. It's just like you do, similar to your home.
At least don't control the building unless you buy it.
We have options to buy it at periods along the way. And we may do that, that's a financial issue to be made at a future point in time, not now. The method of acquiring this building is being done on a leaseback basis. Quite common in commercial real estate, where you don't have the capital dollars to invest.
I know the process.
That's actually why we're doing it. For no other reason. We will operate that building ourselves, just like we do housing in the market. Just like we do housing itself. Our director of housing will manage that building. Our facilities people will manage the maintenance operation of the building.
We just don't want to pay rent to the owner of the building.
Yes, we don't own it.
All right. Go back and forth.
By the way, they are, now, they are not a not-for-profit entity. They are a for-profit entity and they pay taxes.
So your, your, as your, you don't will not be there. The other guy owns the building, who's just going to manage. Okay, now, this never came to the site, but I'm on a site, but I received the package. But I never went full manning. Okay, all right. So I didn't see it. There is a problem here. How to resolve it? Does Lawrence Tech?
Well, they must have, they must have money. They must have money to exist. They can't afford to make a deal with these people on the house. I sent out, one of the other speakers, just a couple of people that I didn't know, made a comment about not feeling there was something underlying. There may be. There may be a mod for us to offer, I don't mean fifty thousand or forty thousand dollars to these people with insurance. Why, I can't sky it up. We, you know, we do not have deep pockets, despite what anyone might think.
Well, you have the dominance. You must have, you must have money.
All right. And an earlier meeting, an issue came up, and I want to bring it up to people and talk about it. Okay? If you don't mind, this is a bad situation. Lawrence Tech, and I always helped Lawrence Tech. I was in favor of everything. I lost a lot of respect. Because it's the same as all of any corporation around here who come to us through tax abatement, the twelve thousand dollars, and they earn four billion dollars. All the same. You're doing the same thing. Now, this, during this whole process, you went downhill, in my estimation. You've turned out to be cruel to the people. That's what's going to happen. You don't care. I see it. I see how they speak. I've heard the president speak. Well, I don't know how to solve it. If I had the money Bill Gates had, I'd let you to buy it. Or I'd let them, I'd give the people money to move. But you must do something. Because if your, if this council would most likely approve the rezoning, I won't. I won't touch it. Okay? But what are you going to do? You going to live with it? All right, live with it. Let the president live with it. I remember two other presidents Lawrence Tech had, Chambers and Marburger. They were fabulous people. I bet they would have passed the answer to this. I bet. Why not today? I've never seen so many people speak for one project as, as you are in this one. Well, must be used to talking. Council of going to approve the rezoning? I'm not going to do it because I can sleep. I don't know. They, they can sleep too, on the house. But I'm not going to do it. It's a wrong save in the city anyway. Not in Lawrence Tech, Boston. I will sleep at the meeting. Oh, you can sleep, you're getting paid. You know, it's all right. Tell us the government.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Kathy?
Tell me, is this, this for the Matthews net? Yep, the first pack net?
Ah, yeah, we, we need to add any one of them.
That's the first one, first order of the day?
Yes.
Let me, let me just make a comment and, and, uh, I was raised in Southfield and I've seen a lot of schools being built in the city and seeing what was built around the schools. We have two major high schools, one in Lake Village and one in, in Southfield. And right behind the stands, behind the ball field, you'll see homes and they have that loss value. It looks like we're in Southfield Lake, we have half a million dollar homes that were built adjacent to the high school. You get down to my neighborhood where Leonard School is, and that is surrounded by a residential. Look at Cranbrook School, they're building fifteen, twenty million dollar houses around that facility. I think the thing that we're already discussing tonight is not, not the encroachment of Lawrence Tech into the neighborhood. I think it's what is happening in the subdivision by students who go to Lawrence Tech. I think we resolved that problem last couple meetings that we had and we were assured that that would be addressed. And I have actually no problem with that involvement. I think that's taken a lot of nature. It's protected the residents of eighty-nine feet away from Circle Drive. The building is only two-story, which undoubtedly, obviously, go through it hardly. See the buildings. Faces, Lawrence Tech does not have any access to Circle Drive. And, and so, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I, I look at this as I do a lot of the things that, that appear in the city. And it is not unusual for schools to expand. And you look at Stevenson School. I mean, they have, in the yard next door to them, they have, they have beautiful homes. Templewood, Twickenham. These houses are not evaluated. I understand the, the rural atmosphere you have. But I think that would be the real thing that I think almost everybody is the fact that, that there is rubbish on the street. There is police and safety problems. And I think those things can be addressed, Mr. Chairman. And I am in favor of this development to take place.
Okay, so, Mr. Secretary? Oh, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm listening to both sides. And I'm hearing that everybody wants Lawrence Tech to progress and do well, but not at the expense of the residents that are currently there. And I remember in one of the meetings that we had, we had asked Lawrence Tech, and I had not heard a response back, or at least I don't remember hearing, that the housing that is on Circle Drive, which is what the residents are concerned about, the, the students that live in there, is there a way for you to have that, the housing be rented to your older students? One, not the young students. If you put two or three or four eighteen to twenty-year-olds in a house, you're going to have noise and disruption. But if you put a family in there, students that are older, that, that care, that's more settled, have the, the pine lean so much out of their system, you won't have the same type of issues. And that was something that Lawrence Tech had said they were going to consider. And that would help the residents because my concern is not only with Lawrence Tech, but it's also with the residents because you're equal. You have to find a way to work and live together. And what they were asking is that their peace not be disturbed. And it's being disturbed by having people come into the community that doesn't, that have different, they want to live a little bit differently. I mean, eighteen-year-olds are differently than one of the forty-year-olds. I don't know the age range of your students there. I just know that if you consider putting families in those homes rather than eighteen-year-olds, that will make a difference. And this were some of the things that we were asking Lawrence Tech to take a look at. And they said that they would, but I have not heard how that is going to work out. And I think, Mr. Perez, you told me that you were going to look at that, that that was a good idea. Because when you put four or five single adults into a home, you're going to have parties. You're going to have noise. You're going to have trash. And what kinds of things can Lawrence Tech be, help with the, with the trash? I know you have security, but what about, you know, regular, I don't know. I don't know what else you could do other than explain to the youths that are there. All of the youths are very intelligent and they like clean living. Nobody wants to live in trash. And maybe those are the kinds of things we can continue to remind them of. And, and maybe have a cleanup day or something. I don't know. But come up with ways that, and I believe this is where talking with the residents will be helpful. They're not saying they do not want you to progress because it's not only going to help the city. You ask them, it's just that they want to continue to live in peace and harmony the way they done before. And that is being disrupted. And if you bring more people from outside of the city that's not used to the same type of quiet, the neighborhood being the way that, they're going to bring whatever they're used to to that neighborhood. And that's going to cause even more problems. Is there some kind of thought? I didn't hear any feedback from you on that.
All right, let me cover both of the sides in the order that you presented.
Okay.
First, on the commitment to look into changing who we rent to. We are looking, we're not prepared to make the commitment right now because we don't have a lot of demand for married housing. So to say that we would only do it to married housing or couples becomes a little bit of a problem for us because we get a lot of married housing. And we're not in our core confidence, because education is not rental real estate. And we try to break even, and we involve the students within the ordinance that we do, so that we even the cost of the point of students. We don't make money on rental property for the students. But we are looking into the issue of trying to encourage or do something to boost our married housing in the role of, that we could do that with the housing. So, well, I can't commit to that. I can say that we are looking into that and I'd like to do that. As far as time to do it by age, can't do that. I may see the attorney to check in, assisting with the year or day. But we have to be careful of when we offer something for a lease that we don't get into the issue of discriminating for age or whatever. And age is one of the guidelines. So we, we take care of that. I can't use age as a separator. I have an adult. I can't, I can't hold them against them for having children. I just, as you know, reasons like turn people away usually get out of it. Well, they're not. Now, we can establish as a policy of the university, a married housing area. We can do that. But right now, I don't like the, the people I have in our place.
And also, I, there's nothing to click on if you don't. Also, there's other colleges you can rent based on their years in, in school. Like you have seniors or whatever. So that you, although you're not saying it by age, but you are saying it by maturity more or less.
That's possibility. And I don't know, unless the students can help me out with that. We can do that. We will do that.
Because what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is come to a common ground so that everybody can at least live together. And right now, it's just not going to, it's not going to work.
We will do that. We will, I don't know whether we'll break it. I'll just say right now, probably a junior, senior level, not a lot of them. You know? They have to be junior level now. They have to be junior level now.
Okay. Well, maybe you can be junior level so that they can not have four single people in one home or something with bad respect. Other than that, it's gonna cause a problem and it's not gonna go away. And I, I can't support something that's not gonna go away.
I think they have your message. But I think it's, I'll have to work it out so that it becomes harmonious within the neighborhood, whether it's seniors or whether it's people who work on master's degree or whatever. But, uh, I think you understand what our concern is.
Yeah.
And it's, it's my concern also.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry to catch you off.
No, no, that's okay. I was just trying to make sure, because I didn't hear the residents say they did not want it. They said they just wanted, they, they want their neighborhood to remain the same. And that won't happen with it.
You've had a second item about the trash collection.
Yes.
Coming to that.
Sure.
Uh, until tonight, the issue of trash didn't come up. I mean, this is a bit of a question that, and it's the first time I've heard of trashage. So, I don't have an answer for that, except to say we'll look into it in something, okay? Number one. But number two, at the gathering last Thursday night, the students did offer of their own motion to be available to help with projects in the community. They did, and they talked about, they were talking about cleanup yard cleanup. And I think they thought, they thought it was breaking and stuff. I don't know that they had trash in mind when they made the statement, but they did commit to doing those kinds of community projects in, in Circle Drive area. So, turn that into a trash periodic, trash day cleanup or whatever, would not be a problem. Am I correct, you missus?
You're very correct.
Am I correct? I'm speaking for him in that case, because he's the one that works with the students to create those kinds of activities that you're talking about.
Um, I had also suggested, we talked about older students, but I'd also suggested, uh, when they think of faculty or staff, um, um, I know a number of universities do that. And I, I, I honestly, I can't, I have no idea what your demand for that is, but that's a suggestion.
We do that now. We have at least one that I know of, one person in security that lives in the house. He spoke at one of the, uh, early planning commission sessions. And, uh, I don't know if we have any others right now, but we do offer that to, to faculty as well.
Um, I'm extremely proud to have Lawrence Tech, um, as a part of the opel. And, uh, I've been here forty years and seen all the wonderful things that Lawrence Tech has, uh, contributed to this community. Um, I think on this issue, uh, and I've had these discussions with a number of members of the administration of Lawrence Tech, I think on this issue, you have a learning curve. Uh, as you say, this is not your, um, uh, main function or purpose. And, um, uh, I, I think some mistakes have been made. But I also feel very satisfied, um, that Lawrence Tech is committed to being a good neighbor. Just as, uh, you want to have fine enjoyment of your campus and go about your daily business uninterrupted distractions, um, certainly so do the people on Circle Drive. And, uh, since you are a major property owner on Circle Drive, then it's incumbent upon you to step up and be good neighbors. In talking with the dean students today and to, um, to the public affairs director who's doing that, um, and others, I feel very satisfied that you're going, you have and will continue to take corrective action. You can also, uh, have greater communication with the people on the street going forward. It's just something you, uh, you didn't do, um, but now you will do. And, and I'm, I'm, um, I'm sure you're looking.
That is one of the things we discussed among ourselves that, so to speak. Uh, if anything we can add amount, it's, it's the manner in which we communicate and aren't actually anything. An example was Saturday, when the students was handing out the flyers, a week ago Saturday, Friday, maybe, because people were looking at the doing and were inviting them to the event on Thursday evening. And, and one woman was very upset and they came to the door and, and threatened to call, he looked more like a student to her, okay? And as a result, she threatened to call Kerry Valentine, the head of Campus Facilities. Our point of contact, our day-to-day, is an issue of lawn cutting, maintenance and campus facilities. And, and we know from this experience that that was not good enough and that's gonna change.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay? I think we're ready. Uh, I need a, a motion to act on the future land use map.
Mr. Chairman?
Cassie?
I move that the future land use map, Southfield, permits, plan to be approved.
That's support. Been moved by Mr. Cassie, supported by Mr. Cyler. If we approve the, uh, future land use map, uh, permit, are we prepared to vote? All those favorites, if I could say aye? Opposed? Uh, let the record show that it was six to eight, one name. I need a resolution number.
You know, order number fifteen eighty-six.
Well, it says resolution in there.
Through the chair.
Mr. President, through the chair, uh, chief planner and I have discussed this, definitely the master plan should be done by resolution only. You don't have to adopt an ordinance. I mean, I and B, should be decide to rezonate property, that must be done by-
I see.
If master plan, that may be done by resolution.
Was my motion correct then?
Yes. Um, we, we, we need to create a resolution. Or is this the resolution?
The motion is the res-
Is the resolution. Okay, all right. Because in a, in our, our, uh, material-
I, I noticed that the planner said resolution number is here.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, now, uh, we're gonna act on Z R thirteen ten.
Chairman?
Let me just clarify, was the whole take on the resolution? Yes.
That's the head vote.
It was six to one. Bless you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
The public hearing has been held and closed. I move that Z R thirteen ten, uh, be rezoned from Harford Single Family Residential to E R O Educational Research Office.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Cassie and supported by Mr. Cyler. They would rezone the land from Harford to E R O. Are we prepared to vote? All those favorites, if I could say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, let the record show that it was, the vote was six to one. And now we have the side flag.
Chairman?
Mr. President, we need an order. All right, yes. Now, we need an order, now we need an order number.
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, fifteen eighty-seven be introduced.
Fifteen eighty-seven?
No, it's just, uh, fif- fifteen eighty-six. Fifteen eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Uh, it's been moved by Mr. Cassie and supported by Mr. Cyler. They will introduce for this number fifteen eighty-six. Are we prepared to vote? All those favorites, if I could say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, let the record show that the vote was six to one. And now, we can do the-
Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Cassie.
I move that S P twelve eighty-three be approved.
It's been moved by Mr. Cassie and supported by Mr. Cyler. They will approve S P twelve eighty-three. Are we prepared to vote? All those favorites, if I could say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, let the record show that the vote was six to one. Thank you very much. I'm gonna call a five-minute break.